The law.
Oh.
Okay.
That is.
Yeah. We can do all that.
Okay, my big issue, hold for me October three thirty four. Um, for reasons excuse. And um. There uh, uh, Gloria. Uh, Russian agents.
Missing.
And my home. We'll demonstrate well, okay, um. Uh, welcome to our center and you will be by one head. Will be speaking to us later. And is there anything else to? Cover of your.
Right, we'll let them talk during public expression. From it.
Pretty good.
My time.
Is there a acceptance of the attempt, is there a?
No.
A second.
A second.
Okay, we got it here. And all those favorite, I.
I.
All this post, okay, just you know, um, group of minutes from March fifteen. There much for two group minutes. Uh, I need names, I'm sorry. Does that or voices or something?
Say that one.
Then it will be on, on the record, but Joe, Joe, very good, thank you. And we're up to the period of other good friend. Welcome to our end of your own minutes. So that's a good problem. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, is there senses of voting for the. Minutes. All those in favor, I, I. Those fellows. There ain't nothing, okay, very good, move up. Um, so I'd like to welcome Ted Dixon and Andrew.
Certainly, sir.
We'll be discussing a little bit of the financial. Finding ideas and approaches and also be discussing with us concept of. Of supporting direction of the of the race. This. Uh, direction, something.
Alright.
Is there somewhere everybody can see who's on line that could be standing or, or allergic like these people?
Well, I don't, I'll move and then went here.
Is that right? And what about other side or?
Thanks.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, thank you, everybody, for, uh, for having us here, you know, there's a long commute for us. In all three doors, we. And which group will you represent? Sure, uh, my name is Ted Dixon, um, my, my colleague Andrew Stern, and, uh. We are with, um, Beacon Point Advisors, you might have seen our office down the street as Northridge. Um, but that changed very recently as, as Monday, uh, as a month, yeah. And, uh, you know, I've been in the investments advisor business since two thousand. Um, and I, uh, live inside Harbor, uh, my wife is probably just over there on the street. And I'm also involved with the British Hampton Presbyterian Presbyterian Church as the head of their finance committee and helping them as a nonprofit. Um, you know, really sustain themselves, um, future and, um, on Andy, which is here now, so Andy Stern, uh, I'm the founder of. Doorbridge Wall Partners, which is now part of Beacon Point, I addressed that just one morning. Uh, I've lived out here in the Hamptons full time for ten years, I've been having access with my family. It's already the East Hampton system. Uh, I'm also a board member of the retreat, chaired the finance committee. Uh, from the treat, so I'm certainly well aware of the challenges and, uh, issues faced by local nonprofits for sure. Um, so as a firm, what we really do is provide, uh. Wealth planning advice and investment services for our clients, it's mostly high net worth individuals that we service. Uh, but we have a great deal of experience in different nonprofits, uh, both professional and personal, so, um. You know, we are literally next door. Uh, and we, uh, really welcome the opportunity to be of, of help and of service, uh, to the library, so. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here today, you know. And, um, you know, maybe just to go into, you know, how we work and how we engage, so, um, we are a registered investment advisor. Which means we are regulated by the FTC and we, like you, are fiduciaries. Uh, the library, we're fiduciaries for our clients because we're remitting other people money and that means we have to put our clients' interests immersed by law. Um, and, you know, part of that is our fee structure, so we are paid one way or another and that's a flat percentage of assets under management. Um, we are not, we don't sell rock investment products, we, uh, are not paid any differently depending on, you know, how the client is invested. Uh, and that really keeps us independent and keeps us out of the mind that, you know, trying to find the best investment solutions. Um, for that particular client, that particular situation, that those particular circumstances. Um, so as Andy alluded to, we provide, uh, investment management services, so what that means is that. Within sort of guide rails that, uh, with, with the client, uh, we make the specific investment decisions. Um, to get to the desired, uh, you know, investment outcomes that are maybe that particular client, so. You know, we generally, um, as we would say, we conservative on the investment side, we are not trying to just look at defenses. Uh, and we very much consider ourselves to be. Try to be good stewards, uh, of client assets, um, you know, slow with standing rather than, you know, slaying of this. Um, and then the other side of that is financial planning, uh, and so we do a lot of work with our clients on, you know, the complete financial picture, uh, for them, you know, not just the assets that we manage. Uh, but, you know, large expenses down the road, um, maybe large inflows of new funds, you know, all that, it has to be done. Holistically, because if you're only looking at half the picture, then, you know, that's where most serious mistakes can happen. Um, it's a planning absolutely informs, you know, how we manage the investments. Um, so in terms of how we engage, so we're an advisor, so we're not a custodian, don't hold client assets. Our two main custodians that we use are fidelity and Schwab. So in this case, with the, the assets the library has, the fidelity, um, we have a dedicated team there, uh. That we have a wall along the street of fidelity and, uh, and that really is as simple as it gets, uh, you know, we were to engage. It's a matter of just assigning us as the advisor with fidelity, there's no new accounts, there's no, um, groups to jump through that way. Um, and one thing that we would want to do.
Um, I was just gonna. Can you guys hear online survey? Yes? Okay, very good, thank you.
And one place where we would want to start is to, um, form, help you formulate a, uh, investment policy statement. Uh, so typically when you have an institution there, uh, in a fiduciary role, it's in that institution's. Interests to have something written down as to really the guidelines of what you're, you know, what, what you'd like to invest in, what your goals are, what your constraints are. Uh, and we've done this, or happy to help you draw that up, but it really protects you. Uh, because, you know, you're, you're handling money that is not yours, and so it really shouldn't be spelled out. In a specific way, and that's something that we would help you, um, draft and come up with and then you adopt it. Um, I did meet with Lisa and, um, and Danielle earlier and, um, I get to learn a little bit about the history. Uh, of the funds in the library and, um, and, you know, so the upcoming, uh, things are going on with capital campaign. Uh, so, you know, should we engage? Um, I think either the next steps would be to really kind of get a clear understanding of the board's. Conception, the, the purpose of these funds. Uh, and, you know, with especially the capital campaign being in mind, you know, what sort of, you know. Are you gonna need, you know, some half all of these funds in the near future, because that will be directly, uh, related to. How we would advise you to invest in. Uh, so, you know, we want it to be a dialogue, it's not, you know, a two way street, you know, if we're not learning from you and you're not learning from us, then, you know, things break down and that's how mistakes happen and that's how. You get a mismatch of risk tolerance and, uh, and investments, uh. So I would be happy to open it up for any questions anybody has, if anything's not clear, you know, um, really anything at all.
Not really, no. It's very clear. And.
Yeah.
I.
Okay, no, I have no questions. Sorry.
That might be a good day.
Sarah, any thoughts?
Okay. Oh, so, okay. Well, look, I'll, I'll just add, you know, also, if we've logged experience in, it helped me to draft investment policy statements.
Yeah, it's awesome.
I, I really, well, I mean, whether you saw it or not, I really strongly encourage you once you put something like that in place.
Ah.
It was really critical, yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned it, it's quite a long, Henry, right?
Yeah. Me too, well, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Only friend that I was new approach. If someone can give each other. Sure, did you guys?
Well. Very upon that. And so.
Do you remember the time it's made? I find what's the main issue.
But what should be kept. So you now have to ask them who they were, you know, we should notify them.
We talked about the last night, we did in last week.
We did.
Those are the minutes.
Okay. Um, one, one thing that we talked about the finance. Think would be important, just get your views or thoughts. I'm new to the board, so, so understanding the. Cash flow that comes in, how it's on the library, given where we went from the zero rate in March to actually a fairly high rate and you have an influx of that. There's probably CD ladders and you can create different types of operating accounts and just move by quote. So that you're getting some sort of yield, whereas. Five years ago, ten years ago, we didn't really have to think about that because we were sort of at a zero rate of. You, you layer upon which just happened last month where you had some bank revolves, right, and they happen to be very smaller regional banks, um, BIC and the, the, I don't know, four hundred, that. But that's something that has kind of changed since the last, uh, meeting, right, cash management has become much more of an issue than, than in very much the vast of front center.
Yes, exactly, and so.
Would be assuming. The heat stability from the economy and the dollar. A plan that will. Focus the investments. And not just cash, but it will be gold or maybe something tangible. But at least the most conservative. Against the ends of how believe has the valuation of the dollar now. And if that risk for international currency. I'm sure we know more than I. We focus a future plan. So that we don't use our cat, isn't worth. A lot less than that you can't aim for, hint that these investments could keep it level in the air above. If not, this is. At you.
Right, I would say, you know, also this kind of issue, if it's going to be incumbent on us to really learn a lot more about the purpose of these funds and what they're allocated for, what they're used for. Uh, how the cash flow operates within the organization, that's going to inform us on providing suggestions with best vehicle, maybe capital. Uh, and, you know, and work with you to figure out, uh, what makes the most sense to me, the position that you're in. Is such as, as Ted mentioned, you're a fiduciary for this capital, so you, you, you've got an obligation to make sure that it's working in your best possible way for the purposes of the, of your position. Right, um, and we can, we're not got this one around that.
Yeah, I think that the three. Uh, where cash account is will be for our general needs, I do research. A short term interest bearing account that can manage, you know, the. Let's say two to three month. Or curlys and and then a longer term, so we have two interest bearing accounts. Um. And I look at it, um. You know, a small savings interest bearing account that can generate some sort of, you know, inflation adjustable. You know.
There, there are particularly resonations what we have.
Yeah.
And with, because of the lack of guidance.
Yeah.
And just in the region. And are there limits on what we can invest in, as of this, so public library, I mean, I know school district can't go.
No, not association library, there's no nickel. Hmm, but with reception and moral, you know, I think a conservative view on.
When, when Joe pointed out, I think the fact that a year ago, we could have been five months of public, because there's a lot, you know, and. I'm sure it's going, yeah, and there's help.
No, I think it's just checking out on our, just like general cash flow needs, that is our cash account, like in our short term. You know, needs that we have on an annual basis and two federal interest bearing account that. It ends liquid and has a majority of, you know, not having to wait, you know.
It's a virtual usage, small scale, you know, as we go to. The capital in a pain in larger funds. And then the projection for when we're there to start this. Or lots of materials that are, for you, you know, you go.
Well, that's enough.
I just, I just did on my roof. And I'm able to contract to top achievement. And in my house, it did a great job. And now. Uh, but it's a matter of, you see what we're going to be dealing with, capital campaign, right, to them, it's got to be someone safe, whatever who's out there. Maybe games on that safety and we're going to be finishing with. The renovations and the changes. A constant change of things. Of material supplies, contracts, you know, if labor market, we, we right now.
Yeah. Just get a lot of balls in the air.
You're a lot of.
Yeah. And we are, not only we are non friend.
Well, that's right, and, you know, I mean, I know that this is the moment to do the weeds too much, but.
Yeah, I think mostly agreed to. Well, with it, I.
Yeah.
We can sit down and talk about it.
I think that's, that's right, that's.
Yeah, it's a very just simple plan, it's nothing out of common.
Right.
Just organizing.
It's, it's, it's about organization, it's about, you know, making sure that assets are allocated and, and. Clearly delineated with what their process, right? Uh, and, you know, we can help.
And separate your operating business to, well, we have. From there on, what I, you know, facial judgment, I mean, your. Having a weakness and small conservative, very conservative.
For sure.
Um, just taking that out, we cannot take this.
That's.
On my papers.
Thoughts about should we be, you know, we're, we have a consultant that we hired for capital campaign.
That Martin? That Martin?
Yeah, yeah. Should sell it next week. Um, yeah, so we've got, um. You know, should we, and should there be in the damage, how should, what are you thinking about, like, all that stuff, depending. Um, getting your expertise on that is probably helpful.
Absolutely.
Because my view as well, we could, we could sit on cash, let's get interested in some scholarship, right, and, and so how do we think about that? You know, more holistically than maybe we had to last three classes. There are certain things that are caged, there's certain things, like the golden hundred. It's for the renovation.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the total, it's all the cash that became, all the cash that isn't gaining interest right now. That was giving, oh yes, you know, there should be some reappropriate that to things that the library wants. Hmm, and so, um, I think. Uh. The, I think we're. It's a good, yeah.
Forget that, right?
Well, yeah. Some of your students.
Yeah, yeah. They asked me to talk up. Um. I missed it, I'm like, that's your adversary. Oh, I'll just say, of course, you know, again, we are literally very strong, so there are already. So, uh, well, I'll, I'll just, I'll mention real briefly on, on your bridge, so, uh, you know, we have fortunately have, you know, quite a bit of success in growing the firm over the last several years. Uh, you know, we manage now north of a billion dollars in assets and. Uh, we were approached by another organization, same industry, same spin, um, much larger group. Uh, based in California, um, and we agreed to basically combine the companies, so, um, that became official. Literally.
Right, yeah.
Well, congratulations, guys.
Yes, yeah, exciting, well, but, uh, it, it really, it will only further enhance our capabilities.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, chemistry pair of prices and.
Yeah, oh yeah. Every world scales.
Great thing.
Yeah. Scale this long, this business. Yeah.
Couple of basis points more.
Sign on the buildings. Changes. Yeah. Very great, well, thank you for having me. Excellent.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Okay, um, we're forward, um, is there a report?
All the reports from the friends that they held on April first, their first ever. Trivia night, and it was a big success, I think there were thirty five participants, everyone had a fabulous time. And it was also great because some of the people had never been in the library before and they were looking out into the back and were talking about Fridays at five and. So it was, it was really, it was so much fun. I will say that the library team did win by one point, but of course, we could not officially win. Um, but it was, it was really fun and American High donated some great refreshments and it was, it was fabulous. Um, other friends news, they have just finalized the offer for Fridays at five, can't tell you who, but it's a good lineup. And.
Wait, what, we can't know?
Oh, sorry. I can't really think of her right now, but. They announced them memorial that we did, right?
So.
Your bird will be named once.
Don't, don't.
Don't shit.
But Serena Allen was the first mistress and she was wonderful, she's the new president and she was great, I was really. Also, yeah. They wanted you to be there.
They, they first.
Think they put eight hundred dollars in bank, yay!
No. We're still. Thank you, um. There were some announcements, um, there, the, the field came up a little bit. That couple of. And another correspondence, we have a letter from Jerry Bauer.
We have a letter from Jerry Bauer. Lisa, I'm happy to see you are using the gallery. Perhaps you want to serve a little wine. Five thousand dollar check. For all of us, so that was so.
Nice. Thank you, Jerry Bauer.
Thank you, Jerry, that was so nice. So, so nice, and we also got, just I wanted to read this from Bill and Diane, well, Bill Wall, Amy Wall's dad. Also sent a check for a thousand dollars. Your Lisa enclosed is my checks on thousand, five hundred, should go to the Amy Wall scholarship. The other five hundred is for library operating expenses, I hope you didn't think I forgot you, it's just not possible, forget the library. And all our love, Bill and Diane, so. The Amy Wall fellowship is at the school now, so that was very timely and we'll have a reception. In June. That was the person.
That's fine, wasn't that?
Um, we will, uh, hear the reports.
What? Department reports are in the package.
Yes.
Maybe definitely, oh, I'm sorry. Department reports are in the packet. Any questions?
I have a lot of that.
It's on the.
Yeah. Minutes, minutes.
And you want to go?
Um, we have the director's report. Egg hunt. A raising, there were probably three hundred people here. I couldn't see much because I was the Easter bunny and I was. But four thousand eggs all found. Uh, the children's room staff.
How many?
Four thousand eggs.
That's. How was that?
It's great. Come on. The children's room staff. They, they did an amazing job, they had it perfectly organized and there were just so many happy people, kids, grandparents. Everybody, it was, it was so much fun. Yeah, it was, it was great, happy people. We're doing lots of community collaborating. Um. Well, budding authors is in our. Gallery right now, the reception will be coming up where all the school children grades eight through five. Ten, eight through five, from all the local schools. Created bones and we have an author's panel and we'll have reception site, it's amazing, please go out and look at it.
Yeah.
I think the author's name is, I can. Get that to you. It just. I actually attended a hay ground school to their student presentation, so I was a panelist and. That was wonderful. Um, we have our shred day with the British Hampton Fire Department tomorrow, bring your papers, do all your tax papers. We are going to have a water table at the half marathon at five K. And we are going to participate in the pride parade in East Hampton, June third, if anyone would like to march with us. And then kids. It's Saturday, June third. Yeah, we're thinking libraries are for everyone banner and then Danielle had a great idea to hand out marks instead of candy.
So that's June third.
That's June third.
At what time?
Um, I think it's ten, but I have to get all the information from Tom House, but he stopped in and he's very happy that we're participating. So that's great.
I forget that it's the season.
It's the season.
You're working.
She is, we also, we were invited to the, um, tomorrow, we have to have members going to the British Hampton Childcare Center for active shooter training class.
Okay.
Hmm. Um, Jen and I met with Brenda Simmons, the executive director of the South Hampton African American Museum. To discuss they would like to get a museum pass after we reached, also some joint events.
Oh, that's fabulous.
So, um, that's great, couple other things, oh, we're getting, uh, blood pressure kits for our library of things, so you can check out a blood pressure kit. Um, and we are doing our, our AED Narcan training, May eighth. Here and we would like to close until three. We can get some other training.
I need the information on that, so when are you going to do that, the CPR?
That is May eighth.
May eighth, I might have a couple of.
Good, this is just for staff, sorry.
Yeah.
This is staff one, yeah.
I don't know, I do a public.
We're not. That's a good idea. Um, and Shannon and I met with the British Hampton School Superintendent and Principal. Um, and we'll talk more about that in the. Further part of the meeting, but things are going great. That's how wonderful. Got some great fun plans for summer and, um.
Good.
I have to back off on the, so, third, I have to be working that Saturday.
Oh, for the brain, um. Oh, yeah, but you're still doing the water table at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, what is the marathon again?
Is the British Hampton five K and half marathon and they actually, it's a fundraiser and we are one of the beneficiaries.
What's the date?
It is Saturday, day six.
Yeah, I, I'm also. Before, a weekend before. More early, but after the morning.
Any questions, Thomas?
No.
Thank you. So Washington City, do you drink or not?
I said.
Alright, um. Oh. Oh, yeah, call doesn't trigger, sorry. I, I, this post, here we go.
Bye.
Oh.
You did the most.
Yes.
Second.
Well, again. Uh, I'm finished business, financial advisor, he just, um, had that present. Uh, I finished business, financial advisor. We've just, um, had that presentation.
I think we'll do it with the resolutions.
Yep, okay. Um, last week, uh, last month, we heard a little bit about. An elevator upgrade that we were going to be looking at. And we looked into it a little bit further. Then someone came and actually, um, did an inspection and Eric, do you want to speak about that? Or do you want me to speak about it?
Um. Why don't you, yeah, Tom, you speak about it. I don't know that you guys can hear me that well, so I think I'll, 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 I'll listen as much as I can.
Okay. Uh, so these happen to be here, the phone showed up, those, um, services.
Was to install this particular elevator.
Had basically told us not to participate in that grade because it was, um. Not really necessary.
How good?
And it, um, wasn't. So we're going to follow that advice rather than set aside nineteen thousand dollars. Um, we've done enough with it, yes. Right. So, um, if that's how we're, we're good with that, is there a resolution on that?
There is not a resolution on it.
Since we're not doing it. Further discussion on that? Anybody?
No.
Like a control panel, right?
When she said, this is really a top of the line elevator, a control panel that is there in there now is better than the one that would be replaced. And if they took out our control panel, it would put it into another elevator.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's approved to sit up not to do.
That's all we need to say.
But that's all we want to say.
That's it.
Alright, and just before, just I would like to point out though, that sometimes it is true. So for instance, I went out and spent like two thousand dollars. Here and it has a keyboard which has got the, um, something, I guess it's called butterfly. So I'm on my third keyboard every year. So I learned how to type on a man, a typewriter, it's very powerful, right?
Oh, yeah. Lisa.
So, I mean, okay.
I'm waiting.
Um, destination of reserve funds.
Well, we'll talk about that in the finance committee.
Alright. Um, in terms of interior renovation, we did have, um, H two M. Come in and discuss a little bit more if you want to cover that right now.
Um, we just went over, and I do have a statement of need, which I can hand out, which. You can just take home with you, but, um, they came up with. Some initial opinion estimates. And. When I'm preliminary estimated projections, I can't talk, projected costs two point five million, including the high end. Of every possible situation, but it's all in the statement of need, which, um. The Rotolo, our fundraisers are, are meeting with people now for interviews and they wanted to have this completed. And they talked with people, um, so the letters went out. We followed up with emails. We got, I think, about twenty responses of people that were interested in being interviewed. So. However, many letters was that?
One, a hundred and thirty three.
Right. So. We sent a lot, but twenty is a good number. We're, they're still following up. They were talking about having a volunteer either on the Capitol Campaign Committee or. Board members, someone make follow-up phone calls potentially with. Potential people who said they were interested, which then have not yet scheduled, but in the meantime, they sent out another email, so. There's eight, I think, eight or ten scheduled now. And then I'm going to be meeting with them again next week. We'll talk about getting the focus groups set up. There'll be a board focus group, but friends focus group. Um. Community member focus group. Staff. And so we're moving along.
Oh, just in the ladies' lounge, I mentioned that. I might ask you to home, uh, part of it, as you would know. That you had written up to us, you had a boss in the following, now, that we'd never received one of that.
We'll have to check your. Unless we have, we may have pulled out the board letters. I think we pulled, and we have them here today.
Um, can I just ask a question? How are we going with Rotolon Associates, as if we're. Are we still determined that what's the early version?
So I don't know where you're at.
Uh, how do we like working?
Oh, I'd rather do that than executives.
Oh.
But it's going along and I'm having, it's great with Mark Halish.
No, we can't.
He's right there answering and it's, it's, oh, um.
Just to, could Tom recommend that we give? What was our regional figure on the renovation by H two M? It seems like it was worn up. Well, that's. They were kind of giving us the eye lock.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
Until, I think it was seven fifty, pre pandemic. Then it doubled.
And this is one of the double decisions we've made. So this is something we have to own on. And we should have moved, moved to grounds, we should have more of a. This is something that's going to have to be watched, a more, if you take on the financial devices and the capital campaign, campaign and the money coming in. And the time factor of doing this renovation. Because the prices are going up a little bit too much on the tonight. I know materials haven't worn up. They also came down, I saw.
This isn't just materials though, this is sort of kind of a wish list in a way too, that we're not necessarily like, you know. If we're asking for money, we're trying to think of everything now, rather than going back. But I have these, but I'll, I'll hand up before you leave, just so you can see the statement of need in case there's anything you want changed in the wording. But, um.
I'd also have to add in the seventh, that the original was probably just a fair amount of that.
As this is as well.
Yes, we don't have this.
They don't even call it. They don't even call it an S, but they're calling it an opinion.
It's objection of work. There began this, this and this one, of course, and. He's like, I have to, but we might have to be this and this, hopefully get that over there, needs might have changed. So.
And, and I did talk to Tom about it, it would be good to have, I know there's a capital campaign committee on the board, but also. Some that would want to get in deeper with the design. As we're going forward, so were some changes made, um. And so.
Very good, um. Did we resolve a couple of that?
We didn't, it was, it's very complicated and we actually sent it over to our accountant, but they can't do it. Because.
There are an account, they buy ours, they're an accounting firm and they are our auditors.
Okay, right.
There you go.
So we're looking into if it is even worth at this time hiring another person to do it, because it's only one quarter. We should find out that it's only one quarter that we qualify for, so there's. We're gonna, we're gonna look at that, yeah.
Might cost more if I.
We talked a little bit last time about the event nature, although, um.
Well, the update is that Martyr, I, I spoke with Martyrs and I was just asking questions about the tree, and the place on tree. And they offered to donate. An Oriental spruce that they feel will be hardier. Um, so I was just talking with them yesterday about. When Charlie signed. So it's, so we're very pretty. I think it was ten feet.
Oh, wow.
Eight to ten, and we'll put it in the, we just have to find in the construction plans where those wells are exactly.
It is a very, it might. It grew very big.
We want it to be big, yeah. Then we don't have to.
By seventy foot, Washington.
It's like.
I think, yeah, that that grew. There's a slump because many people in the community could very happy with.
That's what I told them. Right, so that's great.
That's very good. Um. New business, uh, we were. Analyzing, um, just how many people we have there on Wednesdays. Uh, it's really quiet. And so, uh, we will still have discussed, uh, a proposal to perhaps. Uh, cut back on the number of hours on Wednesdays, currently we're all controlled by PIA. And it's basically to very.
Well, no, at, for summer, I was thinking eight, because we have several events, we have our Jazz Fest.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so I was thinking if we stayed open until eight in the summer and then maybe in September, October, go down to seven. A lot of libraries do summer hours and winter hours, these are later hours. Uh, it just seems, do you think our staff resources, when people are in the building? Uh, makes more sense.
Hey, guys, and, and when it comes to closing earlier, have we given thought to what it means to our staff in terms of. Um, their payroll, are people going to be losing money that they kind of are banking on? Is it, is it going to be a staff issue at all, or is that going to be not a problem?
Staff will be happy and no one will. We'll just be able to. Use them in other times when we need them more.
Great, okay, great.
And we're still debating the change of. Okay.
What change? Oh, salary? Oh, no, we decided that a long time ago, yeah. Not until night and clock. I mean, maybe when we have our, you, we got adult space. And it'll be, you know, wall to wall teams, and they're working, so.
Summer clothes, you'll be late, and winter clothes, you'll be late.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, you want to move on to?
Sure.
Okay, um. We will, uh, enter into second session.
Wait, wait, we missed the tutor policy.
Oh, sorry.
I would like to have the policy committee meet to take a look at the tutor policy. Last time it was. Updated was two thousand eleven. Um, we haven't really been following the policy and I, I just want to talk about. Sort of even legalities, because the actual current policy is that tutors must sign at the circulation desk. And the name and address of the student, um, unclear to the purpose of that, because. I feel like then we're taking on liability to be monitoring the tutor and the student. I know libraries do it different ways, and I'm going to be meeting with the zone directors on Friday. I'm just going to get, um, ideas about how others handle it, but. Right, it's sort of, we don't really have dedicated tutor space, so it's sort of first come, first served. Um, there's also a limited two hours per day. I just, I just want the policy committee to get together and take a look at it, see. What we think about that. Who is on the personnel committee?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, policy, you're right, policy, did I say?
Yeah.
Sarah, Sarah.
Jumps out, only tutors were assigned, it's school district, no.
Right, and we don't. We, and we have, like, we have a tutor from the district, right?
If we just like, we don't like. Yeah.
Well.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it in the, in the committee, it's just. There's a lot of ins and outs to tutors and libraries. So we want to just sort of.
Tighten it up. That would be for the kids.
Because reserving rooms in advance, we're really not doing it this time anyway, so that's in the policies, so we just need to look at it. The whole policy handbook needs to be read that, but we're just sort of at when things come up. And this has come up. So.
So you need to report those, right?
Yes.
Okay, um. Sarah, Mbachi, Stephen, and Louise.
So maybe I'll email you and we'll see if I'm going to be just.
Alright, very good, um, now we might.
Logic, before we enter.
Yeah.
I just want to say that we hired Catherine Fun. Who started today as a reference librarian. She's right up with a C. C A T H E R Y N E, B U N N. She's coming from Orient and she's just finished library school and she also has a background in archives. So, um, we're very excited to have her come and also be part of our staff. We are all, we also offered full-time Michelle Lopez. To be library clerk, so she'll be filling in in circulation and in children's. First, Michelle.
Um. Catherine is coming from Orient.
I don't know how we need to know that, but. First day. I've spoken schools, but you're well.
Yeah, Perry is actually part of the.
Yeah, you got a path. So I guess we could go on a second, just something, just a quick.
Okay. And I thought for your reporting, is there a motion to do a matter? Uh, did you clear down?
You.
Okay, uh, the motion should be upon a hushes off with Senator General.
Hi. Motion, Deborah.
Uh, Joe, thank you. Um, so this should be Ivan K, we all seen. Um, all those favorite, aye, 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 alright, good.
Aye.
Yeah, Matthew, and we are up to operational projects. Um. That the board trustees proposed in the library at eight P M on Wednesday, but the gym first. And which shifts to opposing on Wednesdays to seven P M starting September first. We would like to report that. Uh, Edward Martin, I think, and John, uh, then. Man, although we share now, aye.
Aye.
You. Uh, uh. Good, we've exhausted the board trustees, point to Dixon. Um, it's no longer.
Beacon point in wise groups, beacon point.
So beacon funds, yeah.
Uh. Is it also, it's still not authorized, right? And Richampe has, uh, had to operate as financial advisor and manager of the trustees, Tom, that'll be comfortable?
Comfortable.
Yes, discussion?
We, there's no one else we want to interview, I mean, I don't want to delay it, you know, they seem fine to me, but.
I mean, we interviewed.
Yes, they're wonderful.
Yes, um. Sarah? Eric?
I'm good.
Okay, very good, um. Do we have the motions for that, though?
On the second, I'll say.
Well, there's my favorite, aye.
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 Oh, gosh, is there somebody who wants to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Absolutely not.
I will make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Joe, that was, yes, alright, this is our time.
I'll second.
Okay.
Representing California and Florida, Eric, right?
You know, Sarah, I'm sitting at my desk and I just, I have this, um, this old passport picture sitting here. I just figured, I just realized, like, you should, you should pull this move.
Oh, my God.
Just like, I mean. I'm part of the meeting, guys, I'm here.
You know, this is part of being reported, yes, alright.
Aye.
There you go, thank you, thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Guys, have a great week. I'll, I'll see you all soon. Bye, guys.